Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the state, the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make any decisions. It's in Christ's name. Amen. This is a five o'clock noon in the City of Council work session for the purpose of two, two items. This is not a public hearing. We will take information from staff, of course, and, and then if council has any questions of, of the applicants, they'll have an opportunity to ask those questions, but there's not an opportunity for the public to speak at this particular hearing. There will be an opportunity for public to speak at Planning Commission and also City Council when it comes back to us for, for the action itself. So Ms. Donovan, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So initially, to start off with, can get this thing to work.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't announce the first time. And this is an annexation request by Stephen L. Jones for 267 acres located on Highway 16, Sidney Pope Road and Lunsford Road on behalf of PR Acquisitions LLC. There are several parcel numbers here that will be described during the work session, so I won't take our time to go through all of that. Ms. Donovan, it's all yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so essentially, this request involves 10 tracts, sorry, 10 tracts, which is the area shown in red up on the screen. The city limits is in blue. It's located about eight tenths of a mile from the closest point that the city owns on both sides of the road. A total of 233.46 plus or minus acres is proposed with a PDR zoning designation for the construction of 669 single-family homes. Only 145 homes would be built in the first two years. An additional 12.87 acres would be zoned ILT line industrial to accommodate 130,000 square foot employment building. And the remaining 21.426 acres would be zoned RS20, which is on Sidney Pope Road for the existing five homes there. So it should be noted that the industrial tracts, which are along Lunsford and the Sidney Pope tracks, which are the RS20, would not be eligible for annexation if the PDR track is not annexed because they're not contiguous by themselves. So I did want to make that clear. The proposed PDR tracks are heavily wooded and undeveloped, except for an existing residential home, which is located across from Georgia Highway 16's intersection with Glover Road. The proposed ILT tracks are also vacant, and the proposed RS20 tracks have single-family residences that would remain if this annexation is approved. Seven of the tracts are zoned RC, Rural Conservation in the county, and the three on Lunsford are zoned M, which is the county's industrial designation. Since this was an annexation, the county had an opportunity to review the project and file an objection. They did so in November of 2024, since it's been a year since you all have seen this. However, because this project triggered a DRI, a Development or Regional Impact, the council and commission decided to stay the arbitration proceedings for 180 days to complete that DRI process. After that was concluded, an arbitration panel was appointed, and they placed a condition on the property that only an additional 145 units, which is what they're currently allowed under county zoning, could be constructed, not including the five existing homes on Sidney Pope Road. And that condition was recorded and remains in effect for a two-year period. If you'll go to the next slide, please, Megan. So the applicant has revised their plan to show the 145 units, and that's what you see here. The purple, blue, and yellow pods would be what they would develop first. But they are also asking council to consider what they're calling a sunset condition that would allow for the 669 to be built once that arbitration condition expires in two years. And if you'll go to the next slide, this is the plan that ultimately they're looking at. So when staff did their review, they based it on the 669 units and not the 145. So the project consists of 11 pods. It would ultimately, again, contain 669 lots, 17.9% open space, and a gross density of 2.87 units per acre, and the minimum lot size of 4,200 square feet. Just to give a reference point, with the 233.46 acres, an RS15 project would allow a density of 2.5, which would be 583 units if it were already in the city zoned RS15. An RS20, which is what you're looking at for the Sidney Pope Road, or what they're requesting there, would allow 350 at 1.5 units per acre. So if you'll go to the next slide here, and these are some elevations that have been provided as part of the application. An anticipated square footage would range from 1,800 to 3,200, depending on the pod, with house prices ranging from the low 400s to the high 600s. Amenities will include a clubhouse, pool, tennis, pickleball courts, multiple playgrounds, bocce ball, walking trails, benches, and possibly a small amphitheater, stage, and community gardens. The development, if you'll go to the next slide there, and there's some more of what they're looking to do product-wise, and I think there's one more, Megan. Thank you. The development would be managed by an HOA and most likely would have master set of covenants, as well as individual covenants pertaining to each of the pods. The developer has also indicated that he is willing to limit the rental percentage to 10%. As previously stated, this project did trigger a DRI. Therefore, all transportation improvements would have to meet the conditions of what they call as their notice of decision that's specified by Greta. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their November 11th meeting and voted five to two to recommend denial of the request, and the minutes were included in your packet.
Any questions, Ms. Donovan?
Ms. Donovan, what's the feedback?
From Planning Commission.
So essentially, they felt it was too dense. That was one of the things that they were concerned about. And also, they did not feel, feel that it provided any benefit to the current citizens of Newton. Thank you all.
Okay, so just one, one more thing, I guess. Does everybody understand what, what they're asking for here in, in what you're calling the sunset provision?
Yes, sir. It's a sunset condition, so it's.
Okay, go, go ahead and take a little deeper dive into that.
All right, so.
Make sure we understand what that is.
The arbitration panel places conditions on it. In this case, they placed one condition, which was no more than an additional 145 units. However, those conditions are recorded with the property and remain in effect for a total of two years. They are asking you to go ahead and annex it with what they call a sunset condition, which would allow, after the two-year period, for them to have granted 669 total units and not just the 145. But they would only build 145 for the first two years.
When did that two years start?
And that started in, you know, Stephen?
July, 2020.
So in July.
Of this year, current year?
Yes, sir.
So it'd be July of, August of 2027, you could start building the other 450 or so, whatever it is.
Only if we approve it. If you approve it. Right, and you will have options where you can approve just the 145. You can deny it. You could approve the 145 with the sunset condition, or you could approve 145 with another number that you decide on for the allowable units.
I got a question. Ms. Donovan, do you know why the county, I think there were some notes in there maybe about why the county didn't want the density?
Because they're allowed to do the 145, and that's what they felt was the appropriate, given what their current zoning is for the property, which is RC. It allows like .62 units per acre, so less than one unit per acre.
And to answer your question a little further, it wasn't the county that requested that. That was the arbitration. That was a decision of the arbitration panel.
Go ahead.
That was not, I mean, I'm sure the county was elated when that number was, was agreed to by the arbitration panel. But that's, after, they heard the case. Both sides, they heard the city, they heard the county, they heard from the developer. And that's what they came up, that's what the arbitration panel came up with.
Yeah, it was a three-two split vote from the arbitration.
So we've got, we've got a couple of options, more than a couple of options here. Annex with the sunset provision in place.
Correct.
And approve that ordinance. When it comes back to us, this is a work session.
Yes, sir.
Or, and, and allow for the 149 units to be built over the next two years. And then at the end of that time, if we approve it as they want it, the other, I don't know what the math is, 400 and plus units. 149 is inclusive of that 600 and something units, so whatever that math is.
145, and then they subtract out from the 669.
Good, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, well, good, thank you. So, and then that would be automatic for them, if we were to do it that way. Approve 149 without the sunset thing, but then during the two-year period, negotiate with the developer for one of the lower classifications that you mentioned, RU20, RU12, that would in fact reduce the total amount of product after the two-year period. Is that correct?
Yep, you could select a number that's not as high as the 669. So we have 145, you could say for now, and then, and say, two years, you wanted to do a different number for the sunset, you could say, but allowing this many after the two-year period.
Or, or the third option is to say, we're going to approve the 149 now, and after the two-year period, just come, come back and ask.
That's correct.
Without any additional approval after the two-year period, they would have to appear again before this group after the two-year period.
Yes, sir, that's correct, or you have the option of denying it. So those are your options.
Right.
So may I ask?
Is that as confusing as I can make it?
Yes, and I'm probably going to be confused even more, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Was there a reason that this was stipulated so clearly as to the sunset being in there? And how it seems to be that's a pretty important piece of weather? Sounds like that's option number one, has a big asterisk by it as that's what they would want. Would that be safe to say?
Yes, sir. They have to do, they cannot do more than 145 units over the next two years. That arbitration that runs with it.
But with the sunset clause, they go right on into.
After the two years, they can go in and then build that without having to come back before this board. And that's what the requests are asked is of them.
But you could use the two-year period to negotiate with the group for a number that would be considered after the two-year period. Or you could say just, all we're going to do is 149, come back, and we'll start negotiations after the two-year period.
That would just require a rezoning if you decide to just say you get annexed in for the 145. They wouldn't have to go back to the arbitration process, but they would go forward with the rezoning process.
And, and I'm not advocating any of those positions. I'm just.
I'm just trying to really, kind of really, what I, what I sense or what I see, the, the focus of, of the project. That's what I'm trying to just.
Right.
Ms. Donovan, what is?
Wade, Wade through. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the zoning?
For 149 units.
For the 145 units?
145, yeah.
That's in the county. It's their RC Rural Conservation, and it's .62 units per acre.
And what's our equivalent? What will we use?
We don't have anything that, I mean, we just go, we don't have a .62. Our lowest one, or I guess the highest acreage one, is 1.5 units per acre. That's the RS20, which is what they're asking over there on Sidney Pope Road.
We're asking for RS20?
The houses that are on Sidney Pope.
Oh, on the, yeah, yeah, and those are already, yeah, those are already built. Those would be 20. So we could make the whole thing 20, and they could have built 145, correct? That means the first 145 would have to, if they built them, would have to fall into that minimum square acreage of the houses, correct?
Yeah, what's that?
Because the drawing, Michael sent me a drawing that they're, what they're trying to do is pack in the 145 in this density in the first two years. It's a drawing I saw.
They would build the three pods shown as 145 units.
Yep.
And if you did the whole thing as RS20, then that was where I was saying that at 1.5 units, you would be looking at, did I have that in here?
300, I think he said.
350.
Good, 350.
Including the 140.
That includes the 145, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's for that PDR property and does not include the five houses that are existing.
Correct, okay. So they could start building, but they'd have to build in accordance with those minimum lot sizes on a, on a, on, on the 20, correct?
If you went with the RS20, yes, they'd have to meet the RS20 requirements.
Okay, got you. They couldn't pack them in like they have in these drawings, correct?
20,000 square foot lots.
Yes.
So it's a half acre, basically, or a little under a half acre. Okay, that's a good size. Because this is way, way, I like that way better than what we're seeing.
So we're talking 400 units? Is that what we're talking?
Three, four.
Yeah, 355 if you include the ones over there-ish, yes.
I mean, I look at my, like, my property is a fifth of an acre. This is a tenth of an acre. I couldn't imagine packing a house on the half the size of my lot, which is already small. I mean, let's pack them in there.
I think people, what I'm hearing is people want lot sizes that are larger now, so they can have a garden, they can have playground equipment, they can have a dog. I mean, I think we've got a lot of supply of small lots, and now we need to balance that out with some larger lot properties. And this being so close to a rural area, it just seems like it flows better to have a larger lot sizes. As we come into town, we become more dense, as opposed to just packing the density out on the perimeter. So may I like the 20?
Counsel, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was about to say, I think it's so large, and I think that, you know, this is going to generate significant amount of traffic onto a county road that's not ready for this. You know, I, I hear the, the talk of RS20 and all that. I will say that I would rather not move in haste to decide something right here and right now. I mean, and I know we're not going to vote today, but I'm just saying that I think this, this requires some more time for us to look at this holistically. One of the things I've been asking for, for a long time, is a strategic growth plan. And it's because of large developments like this that have the opportunity to look at some other things other than just what's good for the developer. Got to look at some things that are good for the community. So I, I would not be in favor of going to just pick something and say this is what it's going to be without some more in-depth conversation and looking at how it really impacts the rest of the city.
Right, that was going to be, that was option two that I laid out, that you take the next two years and you negotiate what that number looks like at the end of the two-year.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if possible, I'd like to hear from the applicant. I've got numerous questions to ask the applicant.
Okay, because we, we have limited ourselves tonight till we've got a 6:30 hard stop, hard start on our council meeting. So let's, we're going to have to move on quickly. We've got, we've got two of these. So who's speaking for, Mr. Jones, how are you? If you'll, state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen Jones, Law Firm of McCagan and Jones, here today on behalf of the applicant. Accompanied today by Mr. Michael Miller of Piedmont Residential and the other PR entities, as well as Mr. Pope Jones and his neighbors that live on Sidney Pope Road. They're also applicants.
You're limited in your time, so if you want to get to questions.
I'll speed it up.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it may be more important to go to questions, quite honestly. Go ahead.
So who specifically is the developer who will be building the actual houses?
Piedmont Residential is the home builder. However, we're also partnering, you'll see, and, and we've got a PowerPoint, Miss Shay, if we could pull that up. We have renderings and elevations as well. We're going to partner with other home builders, potentially home builders, and actually likely home builders that are already building in the city and then to have successful developments within the city. So we would be one of, maybe one or two more builders.
But they're not identified at this point?
They are not. We are not in a contractual relationship with them.
Okay, will this be all fee simple, or will there be any single ownership of any of these?
It will be fee simple, and there's a rental cap as well.
Okay. With that being said, if the 669 is a large amount for 10%, that's still about 70 rental homes in a community. That's a lot of rental homes. I'd be much more comfortable with 55%, which is, brings it down to about 35. I had a question about the septic for the existing home because of the low level that was in there identified by the New Unit Utilities and the city engineer. As part of our charter, though, we provide sewer, and I would need to know a little bit more, you know, from our engineering, from Newton Utilities, about the septic and sewer, because at some point, their septic's going to fail at some point in the future. We don't know when. And how hard or what would that take to bring that on to the, the city sewage plan? So that was a question I have, you know, about the septic and the existing home, because it was only one of the homes that needed the septic. Everything else could go onto sewer, as I understood it.
That's correct.
But on page 83 of our thing, it does say, the city engineer does say we would need to close all the septics and go to sewer. So it's kind of a little contradiction there. Also, I want to, looking at that very dense housing plan, how the stormwater management fits into the plan, I didn't see a whole lot of retention, retaining ponds, to see how that's going to fit into it. I had a question about that two-year sunset clause or reversion clause. And so it's something we could potentially consider as 145 houses now, and if they don't perform, then it reverts to, you know, back to what it was or to much more. And looking at that, again, looking at the maps, and I know this is still just initial, the setbacks, the visual and noise abatements, the tree plan, all that kind of stuff, they look like they're very close to, to the highway there, to 16. So again, noise and the, just the visual, if you're driving, have a look at people's backyards, and if you're sitting in your backyard trying to have a barbecue and looking at cars and hearing all that road noise, I'm very concerned about that. Something that's kind of, I think, starting to rear its head now, living in an HOA, is adequate HOA fees. Didn't look like there's any alleyways or private stormwater systems, because it, as I could tell, again, from that map. Just making sure that the HOA fees would be quite adequate to cover, looking long-term down the financial path. Because oftentimes, current fees aren't enough, you know, people are like, oh, it's only $35 a year, you know, $100 a year. It's nowhere near adequate. Another question I had was the traffic on 16. I know this is GDOT-controlled, but, excuse me. It was putting in a traffic light at, what was it, Lunsford and 16, which would be real close to the existing stoplight at the bypass in 16. But one of the owners or someone up that, that area had mentioned about putting a traffic circle in at Sidney Pope to get in and off of 16. And I don't know if the developer would be interested in, again, taking some of the properties on that side, you know, using the property that's in, being requested, to make a traffic circle there. Again, in coordination with GDOT and doing all that stuff.
Mr. Coricco, let me, maybe the other councilor was there.
Questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's why I'm going fast. I'm trying to knock them out.
Anybody else, and then come back, if it's okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I was taken.
Anyone? You got it.
All right, the employment center, 30, 130,000 square feet, what exactly is that? What is that all about? I mean, that looks, sounds more like a warehouse and warehousing than an employment center. I'm thinking something like, oh, you know, work, you know, some sort of, something with George, West Georgia Tech or something like that. I just need more information on that. Per the DRI on page 95, how will this development add to a highly walkable community? Again, this is kind of out on the outskirts of the city. How does this make this highly walkable? It doesn't really connect to the link, I don't think, at this point, or to the, the County, the County Greenway Master Plan. And looking at that, you'd mentioned about providing a couple acres for an emergency services at some point. Is that still on the table, and what would that look like? And, all right, I'll use my time now.
Okay, all right.
So I read this whole thing. I'm like, I'm, I got a lot of questions.
Any comments? I mean, I know that's a long list of.
I think I took good notes. Councilman and Mayor, I'll try to go through them. Miss Shay, if we could go to the overall concept plan, should be a few slides in. Councilman Coricco, on the septic lot, you will see, that is on the far left side. You'll see sufficient acreage behind that. We had proposed to keep that on septic. We will convert the rest of the homes on Sidney Pope Road to sewer to be served through the development. After talking with Newton Utilities, we can actually convert that southern lot that fronts on 16 to septic as well. Jumping forward to the traffic issue, the plan is, Miss Shay, can we come to the next slide perhaps? To close Sidney Pope Road, that was one of the concerns that the residents on Sidney Pope Road expressed, is that is a difficult intersection to make. So we are going to close that and make that an emergency Knox Box only entrance. They will then exit through the development. The main entrance will be a new road that we are constructing. You will see the highlight on that bottom left side. The DRI and the Greta NOD, through that process, GDOT would not clarify at this time what improvements they want there. However, it could be a traffic light or a roundabout. And Councilman Coricco, to your point, we are fully prepared, should GDOT recommend and desire a roundabout, to make that improvement. And in fact, the NOD, the Greta, Greta's notice of decision, says that we will construct or pay for any off-site improvements that they recommend as part of that access control. So at the time of access permitting, which comes at the land disturbance permit, we will do whatever great GDOT wants to be done there. The Greta also recommend what's called an R-cut on Lunsford Road at 16. I do want to be clear on the 145 plan. Piedmont's and the, and the other applicants, the Sidney Pope Road's desire is to be. Piedmont's and the other applicants, the Sidney Pope Road's desire is to be within the city. To Mayor Brady, to your point, if that is, over the next two years, we discuss what is going to happen in two years, that is fully something that Piedmont is willing and happy to do. If it's the council's desire now to determine what the density after the expiration of the arbitration panel's decision is, that is something we would be happy to welcome as well. But again, all the applicant's ultimate goal, the Sidney Pope Residence and Piedmont Residential, is to be within the city. Should you zone, and I believe Councilman Thompson, this was your point, to the 145 plan? Miss Shay, I think that's on the next slide. Oh, maybe I've lost it already. Come back. That is not what we would construct within the first two years. If you were to set a different density than the 669, we are showing what that 145 would be during the first two years. But we're not going to construct that. We would not commence construction until we landed on what the ultimate development looked like. So, Councilman Krikko, to your point, we're not going to pack in what's there now, or what's shown on the 145. We would have those working sessions to figure out over time what that would be, if that were the council's desire. On the lot size, the lots in this subdivision range from approximately 6,000 square foot to a quarter-acre lot, we call this a life-cycle community. And in the renderings that you have in your packet, and they're later in this presentation, there are various homes for various stages of life. So, you could have your first home, you could move to your family home, and then you could move to your, you know, the master-on-main home, where you can live in the same neighborhood as your children and family. On the stormwater, Councilman Krikko, this is not a fully engineered plan. When we got to LDP for the entire site, or even a portion of it, the civil engineer of record would have to design this site to comply with all Georgia state and local and federal regulations related to stormwater. That includes the Georgia Blue Book, and it would also obviously have to be approved by the city engineer. Miss Shay, could we come back to the concept plan? On traffic on 16, this is a state route. It is within GDOT, this is a GDOT road, and it is within GDOT's jurisdiction. In the NOD, GDOT said, in Greta's Notice of Decision, GDOT said that it will determine what improvements are needed to handle any additional traffic created by this development at the time of access permitting. And that could include, to your point, a roundabout or a traffic light. The emergency services site, we have proposed, if that is something the city is open to, on that employment site, which is at the bottom-right-hand corner of your screen, on the south side of Lunsford Road. That existing parcel is zoned M in the county, which is the county's most intense industrial class. We are taking that down to ILT, which is the lowest industrial class within the city. We do not have, obviously, an end user identified for that, but that would be some sort of employment activity that is permitted in the ILT zone. So, given that its location, and as we all know, this does not have direct proximity to the interstate, we don't view this as like a distribution hub or anything like that. This would be like a local manufacturer or a local widget manufacturer that wants to have a facility located in the city of Newnan, and it would locate on that already-zoned industrial site. And so, we, the size of the emergency services center would be located somewhere there. That would be a conversation that we can have later on with the city, depending on what public fire, EMS, police think are necessary to provide adequate service, not only to this development, but to extend their service area and their reach to other portions of the city. With respect to noise, Councilman Krikko, if you look at the, kind of the left-hand side of the screen where you see 16, we have a buffer between those lots that back up to 16 and the lots themselves. So, we envision that as a, either planted or natural or a berm, to ensure that there is adequate noise protection, as well as visual protection from passing motorists, as well as residents of this neighborhood. On the walkability component, part of Greta's NOD was to include pedestrian facilities, as well as bicycle facilities in this development. We do have, and Miss Shay, can we come forward a number of slides? I've got, we have quite a few amenity areas. Let's come forward one more, please. Here, we have a central amenity area that you'll see circled in blue. That's with a large clubhouse, kind of barn-style, the pool, racket courts, you know, typical clubhouse, but a unique design. In the interest of time, I do have a video of it, but we can save that for the public hearing. But then, in the red circle, we also have a community lawn area for like food truck Fridays, community gatherings, block parties, as well as what we refer to as an open-air stage. So, you know, you could have kids' bands, or parties, or graduation ceremonies for kids within the neighborhood, things like that. And then peppered throughout, we also have these 14 additional green spaces, which you'll see highlighted in yellow. Throughout the development, we have internal sidewalks connecting the, all of those facilities. So, this is a community that is designed to be, like I said, a life-cycle community, where you could have your first home, and you could walk to the grandparents' house, you could walk to your relatives' house, and you have all of those central amenities or amenities spread throughout the development that you can access via pedestrian network. If there were the potential to connect to a future greenway extension, that is also something that we'd be open to, but we don't know that there is the present programming for that. But that would, I think, require programming outside of our development.
How much time? You keeping time? Okay. So, we're trying to, we've got another work session here that we're trying to divvy up the time appropriately. Anything else from counsel, from the developer? Anything else for staff, counsel? We appreciate your time here tonight. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which I am going to have to recuse my cellphone, because one of my agents, or one of my, the firm is actually involved in the, in the commission on the transaction. So, I'm going to step out and ask Mayor Pro Tim Thompson to take charge.
Are here for the rezoning request, RZ 2025-03, by Jaclyn Ren Correll, on behalf of the Turnstone Group, for 63.09 acres, located on Newnan Crossing Boulevard East and Diplomat The rezoning request is from CGN, General Commercial, OCR, Open Space Conservation and Recreation District, and OI2, High Density Office and Institutional District, to MXD, Mixed Use Development. Ms. Donovan?
Thank you. So, this request, again, is from the Turnstone Group, and it actually involves four parcels, totaling the 63.09 acres. And they are requesting a mixed-use development. If you look up there, it looks like there's actually five, but there's a split zoning on one of the parcels, and that's what it's showing out there, is what the current zonings are. Current zonings for the first one is OI2, which is a high-density office institutional, CGN, which would be the parcel on the far right, and the parcel that's at the intersection of Diplomat and Newnan Crossing Boulevard East. And then OCR, which is the one that you see that is kind of dirt that you see up there, that's the city's parcel. And it's being proposed as part of a land swap, and I will address that later in my report. So, all these parcels are located in the QDC Quality Development Corridor, and also the I-85 Building Height Overlay District. That does allow up to 85 feet, but again, the applicant's only proposing a maximum height of 36 feet. The property here has been included in several master plans, which some of you all had seen throughout the years, including everything from a convention center to assist the living facilities, and even the Nest, which was the baseball stadium. As such, it was part of a DRI, and so that governs transportation in that area. Because the DRI that was done was over 10 years old, they had to come back and do a new DRI. And so, again, Greta's comments with transportation will be addressed by that DRI itself. And those have been included in the packet. If you'll go to the next slide, please. And the proposed project, and this is the plan that they're showing, will consist of three pods that will include 258 townhomes, 52 single-family rear-loaded lots, 36 single-family front-loaded lots, and originally, 36,000 square feet of commercial space with 28 residential condos. But at the planning commission meeting, they asked to amend that to 40,000 square feet of commercial space and 32 residential condos. So, the total residential unit count for the entire development would be 378. They're also asking council to consider a 5% tolerance for density in both directions, since they have not final engineered the project. So, that basically would equate to roughly 18 units, more or less, in either direction. So, Pod A, which is the pod to your left up there, is called the Terrace. It will consist of 51 townhomes, 26 rear-loaded lots, 19 front-loaded lots, 16 condos, and 20,000 square foot of retail. Pod B, which is the middle one, would be the courtyards. It would consist of 47 townhomes, 26 rear-loaded lots, 17 front-loaded lots, 16 condos, and 20,000 square feet of retail. And then Pod C, which is the furthest one on your right, would consist of 160 townhomes. The single-family homes would range from 1,800 square feet to 3,000 square feet, with price points running from 450,000 to 600,000. The townhomes would range from 1,500 square feet to 2,000 square feet, and the price points would be 350 to 500,000. All the residential units, except for the condos, would be fee simple. The amenities would include a park in each pod, interior walking, or, excuse me, multiple parks in each, multiple parks in each lot, interior walking trails, and a link connection. The applicant also indicated that their commercial area would also serve as amenity, and Pod B has space set aside for a traditional amenity area, but they're asking for flexibility there, based on what the market preferences are. They had indicated that one of their other areas off of Lower Fayetteville Road and Newnan Crossing Boulevard East had a basketball court, and it ended up, they had to come back on that, because they, the residents were not in favor of that. They also said that they have many passive parts that can be converted into specific amenities, such as pickleball courts, a dog park, an outdoor kitchen, a community garden, or a community fire pit. As previously mentioned, if you'll go to the next slide, this development would include a link connection that would go under Newnan Crossing Boulevard East. And so, essentially, the city tract that they're looking to swap is the tract on the left there. That is an area that was set aside as part of an other rezoning on this large tract of property that runs from Lower Fayetteville up on Diplomat. And nothing has been done with it at this point in time, because the council's kind of decided to work on the link right now and other things, for the strip that's up above Diplomat that you see on your left there. Essentially, what they're asking to do is, because the city's piece appraised for more, they are offering to make up the difference in value by constructing a connection. So, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So, this slide here reflects the front and rear-loaded townhouse products. And the next slide, it shows their front entry, single-family homes. And then these next two slides, these are the rear-entry, single-family homes that they're proposing. And the next slide, this would be how their signage would look for each of the pods. And then the final two slides show the retail with apartments above it, what those would look like. So, the planning commission held a public hearing at their November 11th meeting and voted six to one to recommend approval. And the conditions that they are recommending is included in your packet. I'll keep from reading that, since we are kind of pushed for time. The applicant did also proffer three conditions, one being that they are requesting zero lot lines for some commercial buildings and some single-family homes. They also asked for open container within the development, but that would be a ordinance amendment for the alcohol ordinance. So, that would be addressed in the zoning. And then, to clarify, one of them was to allow alcohol-only establishments. And so, we clarified that to mean like the microbreweries and wineries. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Counsel, questions?
Sorry about that. Mr. Shear was got cut off on a call back.
I have a question related to, to the link. Can you point out on the map again where that link was? And I really want to press towards, when would that link be determined to start? That would be, in other words, would it be in the beginning, the middle, or would there be a, the end, wouldn't it be a no-go but beginning or middle? When is projected start time, and where is that going to be located? Again, I can't see it in.
That's probably going to be, I'm sorry. That's probably going to be a better question for the applicant, as to where they're going to put it and when they would start with that. And they are here, if you would like to ask them that question.
Okay. I'll just, I'll ask them, so they can answer.
Just please state your name when you come up.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Ren Correll. I'm one of the owner representatives for Turnstone Group and for this project. My associate, or maybe Tracy here, we have packets, just of the presentation. I recognize that we're limited on time, so I wanted you to also be able to peruse those while we're answering questions here. So, in regards to the link trail, our intention is to develop it concurrent with this development. We see it as a benefit and an amenity to the community. We have not set an exact timeline with the city, but we are open to discussing that. Our thought is that it would be developed concurrently with Pod A. While we have the contractors on site doing the earthwork for Pod A, they would also be on site and could work on the link connection. That being said, we do need city participation on the other side of the road, connecting to the existing link trail. And so, that's why I say, we do need to have a conversation with the city of when they'd like to make that connection, because what we're proposing is that we'd make the connection on our side across the road, and then the city would need to finish the, you know, roughly 20 feet or so to connect to their existing trail. So, it would need to be a partnership.
Thank you.
Would, Pod A is the top-left, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, okay. And then our property, is that called Pod C, the bottom right?
It's part of Pod B.
Or, okay. So, have you thought about, my concern is, how do, we wouldn't want to transfer the land until we know the link, your part that you're building has been built and accepted. So, have you thought through how that might be structured?
Yes. So, my thought is that we would sign an agreement that essentially says, you know, we set out on a allotted amount of time, you know, say, 12 months, to do our development, to construct the link. However, our intention is to develop this all concurrently, because some of the dirt from Pod A will be needed for Pod B. So, we couldn't necessarily build the connection and then transfer the land, because we would be developing on your property. So, the idea is that we would enter into an agreement where, you know, we can put certain surety bonds in place, just like we do for some of our other developments. For example, sidewalk, street trees, you know, the roads that we're constructing and then turning over to the city, things like that. We could put a surety bond in place. And then, if we don't construct the improvement, either it could be where, you know, maybe it's a reversion clause, or it could be where you call on the bond. We're open to that. We are committed to building this connection. So, I would say, whatever is a reasonable agreement, we're happy to enter into that.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to add, we actually were the original owners of the park parcel that the city owns. At the time, that was, the city had wanted to make a park there, because now the city's goals and objectives have changed to focus on the link. We were trying to partner with that, and we were, you know, also trying to make a cohesive community here that didn't have kind of a hole in the middle of it that may or may not be developed, and it felt like this was a win-win for the community.
I've got one more question, but I don't want to hog the time. Anybody else? All right. So, you mentioned the park. Would, if the city did say, hey, you know, we want to hold that land for a park one day, would that change anything? Well, obviously, Pod C would change a little bit. Would that change your overall plan?
Yes, because Pod B, it would cut right through the middle of that. So, and then additionally, we also would not have the funds to do the link trail.
Through that, okay. We would, I would think if we, answer my question. Okay.
And our intention with this link crossing is that, there currently is a crossing further up, or I guess further down, Newnan Crossing. However, that's just an at-grade crossing. However, that's just an at-grade crossing with a crosswalk. The idea here, and I also, if you look through the packet, it would be a pedestrian and bicycle specific crossings. And that we're trying to focus on safety there so that you don't have, you know, a family with a stroller and little kids and trying to make sure that, you know, they're safely crossing the road. The idea here is that there, or even a bicyclist, you know, isn't slowed down on their bike ride. And that also this would connect pedestrian and bicycle access to the commercial. And the idea there is that it would hopefully be all, you know, smaller local business owners that would be in there and that they would be attracted to the link and would also serve as a resource for the link.
I would just like to make a comment regarding the, the park. And I think although it's something that has been discussed in the past, but typically everything developed on, in, in District One is, is all HOA. Everything with inside, each of those developments has numerous areas that qualify for multiple parks. Quite frankly, Summer Grove, my development, Stonebridge, Heritage. Heritage really is the one that kind of really doesn't have anything inside of it as far as amenity wise. When you go into all, and I'm sure you already know this, but I'll put it on the record, but most of those are all have pools, clubhouses, all that can be used inside the community, which makes it that much more safer to stay inside the community as opposed to crossing streets, et cetera. But I, I like the idea of, in support of the, the swap for the versatility of the link and the usability of the link for everybody that's, that's over there. Because a number of, of my friends, et cetera, love the idea to be able to travel over from wherever they live in, in District One and into downtown. And I think that really would add to the advantage of being over there.
Yeah, that is our intention. And just to clarify, so this would be one cohesive HOA. And the intention right now is to do a pool. As Tracy mentioned, one of our other developments, we had initially done it with a basketball court. And during construction, the residents said, we don't want a basketball court, we want pickleball. And we were unable to change it entirely. And so that's why, you know, our intention is a pool. But if they come back and say, we want pickleball or we want a clubhouse, we just want that flexibility that we are providing what they want. But as you can see on Pod B, we have set aside a sizable parcel that can be one of those, you know, larger amenities.
Yes. Who's going to be the actual developer builder of the project?
We are intending to be the developers of this project. We'll need to partner with groups. And so, so far, we have identified, we are not under contract, but we have identified Pulte. And that's actually the elevations that you've seen to be our partner home builder. And then Tomco Construction would do the commercial. And so it would need to be a partnership because you have residential and commercial pods.
Okay, but none of that's, that's not set in stone yet. There's no agreement.
No, simply because we don't have this project approved. So we didn't want to sign a contract that we couldn't fulfill if, if this isn't approved.
Nope, gotcha. Rentals, the only rentals will be the apartments over the commercial?
Yes.
So the condos will be the condo ownership and then everything will be fee simple. Looking at the apartments over, and I was trying to see a better, try to get a better view of it. The apartments over the commercial, they're going to be sharing, shared parking lots with the commercial?
No, so they have separate parking areas that have been set aside on the side of each of those buildings. And the intention is that those would be set aside specifically for residents so that they don't have to compete with the commercial parking.
Okay, okay, yes, parking is always an issue. I noticed that the school said they're at capacity, the schools that the, the kids would be going to that were in this area, they're, they're already over capacity. So, you know, infrastructure and schools and, you know, police and fire are always an issue. Again, kind of what I asked before was, you know, setbacks, abatements, the buffers, making sure there's adequate, you know, because now you're sandwiched between a road, a busy road, and the interstate. And making sure that you have actual, you know, adequate buffering there for, for noise and visual. Another concern I have is the traffic. And it's already a busy road, that's going to be, make it much more busy. And then I was just looking, this is just my observation on all the facades. And I said, with Pulte, you said, it looked like it was pretty much all hardy, you know, like a stone or the concrete board. You know, potentially mixing that up a little bit with any, some bricks, some stone. You know, I don't know, it's something so it does not, don't look like cookie cutter, cookie cutter development.
Yeah, so can I address those comments? So as, as far as public, you know, safety, things like that, we have spoken with the fire and police departments. They have let us know that with any new development, we will contribute, you know, there will be an increase. However, we will also contribute financially to them in ways that should help their budget so that they can adequately serve the additional residents here. As far as your second question on traffic, so we did a DRI study. It did suggest certain improvements to the road. And so most of those, we would construct 100% ourselves. There is a traffic light that they're proposing at Diplomat Parkway in Noonan Crossing that I think all of the residences, residents in the area would agree is warranted already. And so we would pay our fair share of that improvement. And in talking with some of the neighboring homeowners, they're actually excited by the fact that this would, you know, tip the scale in favor of a traffic light at that intersection. You spoke about the design of the homes. So our intention here is we went back to the comprehensive plan and really looked at, you know, your vision statement and things like that. And it talks about how it wants, you know, historic, small town character. And there aren't many communities today that look back to that design. And so our idea here was a low country style. And so all of the homes are in that low country style where if you look, I mean, especially if you're driving into downtown here, you pass a lot of homes that are very similar to these. And the idea is that maybe you don't want to own an older home. Maybe you want to own a new home, but you want it to be in that historic, small town feel. Excuse me. And so the idea is that we're kind of drawing back on what is historic Noonan, but providing new product. So we can certainly talk about different materials, but just so you understand, that was our intention with the design.
Let me remind some, one, another question. The HOA dues and fees, again, it's kind of coming to, coming to roost in my neighborhood. Gross undercharged for decades, and now there's private alleyways. And they're not cheap to repave. And I'm sure there's going to be some private, you know, the, the water retentions, any stormwater, you know, private stormwater drains that are, you know, not in the public access areas. And maintaining that, making sure that they're adequately long-term covered.
Yeah, so being in this position, I have actually overseen probably over 100 HOAs. So I can certainly empathize with misbudgeting. Whenever we, you know, step in and take over, we also make sure that when we write our declarations, that there's typically an initial contribution fee. And so that then goes towards capital expenses. And then from that, because this will be mixed housing sizes, mixed lot sizes, the idea is that each of the homes would pay proportionally. So if you have a larger home, a larger yard, you would contribute more. Whereas, but then again, if you have a townhome and you have shared facade, windows, roof, you would still need to reserve for those, you know, so that every 20 years, you're able to replace your roof. Similarly, when we were designing this, because alleyways are expensive to maintain, our attempt was to cut down on those. So we technically don't have any alleyways. These are all roads that serve each of the units. There are occasional, what I would call driveways between. However, each townhome, for example, where it's rear loaded, the front faces a park. And so now you have, you're, you know, when you're walking out, it's very pedestrian focused. You walk out onto a path, a sidewalk, a park. But then additionally, you don't have two areas of asphalt that you're now maintaining, which is obviously more expensive. So we did try to think about long-term as a lot of these issues are kind of coming to roost where everybody wants, you know, the rear loaded home, but they don't think about the fact that now you have a house fully surrounded by asphalt that you are maintaining. So the idea here is, you know, really leaning into that pedestrian focus where your front door, you typically exit out to a park, and the back is where you can drive in via the roads.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How much is that link portion that you all are proposing? How much would that cost?
So it's currently estimated at $1.5 million. The parcel that we would be swapping it for is estimated, I believe it was about $700,000. So we would actually be paying almost double to create that link connection than the piece of land is valued for.
Mr. Phillips, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Did we have any plans for that land?
Plan for?
The land?
Mr. Sears was using on the phone. At this point in time, there are no plans for that particular parcel. When we acquired the parcel, you may recall, you were actually on the council. It was on OCR. There were some conversations around a potential park, a community center at some point in time. Then there was the conversation prior to COVID for the multipurpose sports venue there for the summer baseball league. And if we were including our parcel into that particular project at that point in time, obviously when COVID came, that project was put on the books. So there, there are, there are no current plans that I could speak of that this council has allocated now.
And do we own anything of that kind of size on the east side?
No, we do not. No, we, no, we do not. It's probably, obviously we own the Noonan Center property. But as far as an undeveloped parcel, no, not a 10 acre parcel in that area. Probably the closest parcel we own of any size is probably a six acre-ish. It's closer to the Grecian Trail, Lower Fayetteville, roundabout behind the convenience store.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, three minutes, yep.
That, that strip of land that we'd be swapping for, what would we do though? What?
Honestly, it's, part of the provision is that we have to swap land. And so that's why we tried to pick a small parcel so that you don't have a lot of cost in maintaining it and you really wouldn't have to maintain it. What you would be getting is the connection to the link trail.
And there's no, there's no, I don't, is there any provision to make the link? Like if they drew it, if they then continued it all the way down over Diplomat and all the way down like the shopping area there? I don't think there's any provision for that.
Back into Walmart, all the way to Walmart.
So it would take it almost to that, yeah, but on the other side of the road.
If I can add, so in, in the packet, I do have where the link trail is currently projected to go. And then on the following page, in blue is where we would propose that the link trail would go. And in yellow is eliminating the portion that you would have to construct. You're currently proposing to construct it across Noonan Crossing behind the new townhome development that was recently approved. That's actually a wetland area and pretty expensive to have to build the link trail through. What we're proposing is that we would give you the right of way to build it along a flat parcel on our side of the road so that you could continue with that connection. We are already planning to put a connection between our parcels. It just would not be to the caliber of link. So we could potentially partner on that, how that connection goes together. And then I did also just want to note, the current zoning of this parcel is high density office and also general commercial, which means we could essentially build, you know, another, obviously not Lowe's because it already exists, but that can be built right on parcel C. I don't think that is something that the local residents, actually, I know it's not something the local residents want to see because we talked with them. And we worked with them, especially when we did our self-storage there to make sure that there was a buffer between a commercial and a residential property. They have talked about how they like the idea that they would be backing up to residences. And so in our opinion, this is a better use of the property compared to its current zoning.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Final comment.
Go ahead.
One more, yep. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, you're good. One more comment. We're out of town, yeah.
Oh, we're out of time, then I'll stop.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Ren Correll, thank you so much.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, please reach out.
Will do. Appreciate it. With that, we're adjourned to the next. Yes, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.